Mr. Mayor, I stand as one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's see, Mr. Perkins, did you have some suggestions or changes you'd like to, I think you emailed, most everybody's had an opt-in to look?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, just a few brief comments to you and my colleagues and to the public. There are a few matters on the agenda that have citywide significance and magnitude, and two of our distinguished colleagues are absent tonight. The gentleman from Ward 1, Mr. Sumner Davis, and the distinguished alderwoman from Ward 7 is absent, and I would prefer waiting for consideration of the items I'm about to mention in a few minutes for their attendance and their involvement and participation consideration. However, Mr. Mayor, if the Board sees its will to move forward, then I certainly would have no objection, but I think for the record, I just need to read the items that I think have citywide implication. Of course, two of the items, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to mention are items that have already been approved by the Board that are just continuations, but the items are as follows, Mr. Mayor. The first item that should be removed is under Roman numeral 8, Board Business D, the Resolution of Approval and Authorizing the Distribution of Preliminary Official Statement Regarding the $2 Million in Revenue Funds for the Electric Department. The second item is the consideration of the debris burn policy for the City of Starkville. The third item is the consideration of acquisition of land for the purpose of constructing a new electric department building. Of course, if the Board desire, it can go ahead and proceed with that because what's on the agenda is just a technical implementation of the Board order that's passed at the last meeting. The citywide recycling, my concern is about that is that, you know, we need to give the gentlemen and alderwomen an opportunity that are absent tonight, an opportunity to make an appointment to that committee. And fifthly, I mentioned the general obligation bond for the justice complex. We have a public hearing on the storm drain ordinance, and maybe we can defer action until the full Board is here, we can proceed the public hearing. And then, last but not least, the two items that have gotten a lot of press on the, under Public Services Item E 1 and 2, request authorization to raise water and sewer rates, and request authorization to increase the required amount for the water and sewer deposit. Mr. Mayor, and these items for sure, I think should definitely wait for consideration by the full Board, and I would even prefer not discussing these two items tonight because it would just be redundant to discuss this, and I'm sure, you know, the other two absent colleagues have some very important comments to make with regard to these matters. So, Mr. Mayor, these are my preliminary comments. These are the items that I would like to see removed, but however the Board want to proceed with this, I'll follow the will of the Board.
Do we have some other comments from any of the other people that are here tonight in regard to these removals?
Just some comments on some of the items mentioned by the distinguished vice mayor and my colleague from Ward 6. The Public Services Items, request authorization to raise water and sewer rates, and request authorization to increase the amount of deposits for water and sewer service. I would concur, I would think that's something that ought to await the full Board's attendance and discussion of those two particular items. The G under 8, Board Business, consideration of acquisition of land for the new electric department, would also think that that ought to wait for consideration by the full Board. The debris burn policy, we of course, I would recommend some discussion and comment on that, not any adoption of a total new revised policy because there are lots of things we need to talk about in connection with that, though I will have another temporary motion to make on that. The resolutions on the bond issues, the resolution on the approval of the preliminary official statement for electric bond issue, keep in mind, were approved by the Board at the last Board meeting, and these are technical resolutions implementing that full Board decision, which I would think could proceed.
I do.
Those would be my comments. Anyone else with thoughts on any of those things?
Did you have any comment in regard to Item H, Roman numeral 7, the trash consideration for recycling that was marked, I think is one to hold out?
That's one that I did not, certainly there could be whatever discussion of the recycling matter, and this talks about appointment of committee, that certainly could be considered for that because we are with that particular matter. A long way from public information and achieving some consensus on that particular topic, but certainly I would have no objection to appointment of a committee to study that or to listen to any of this, just my thoughts on those items.
So, Roy, did you, would you make a motion then that we take, you see that there's a little bit of disagreement with regard to the resolutions on the bond, and wanted to talk a little bit about the burn policy?
Well, that's a good compromise, with the colleagues being agreement then to remove both of the items, just the two items under E, Public Services, the authorization to raise water and sewer rates, and the required amount for the water and deposit, could we just remove those two as a compromise?
And what about 8G?
8G, yeah, 8G.
Right, right.
Right, those three.
Can we have that in the form of a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the official agenda for the meeting of the Board of July 18, 2006, be approved with the following items being deleted, Roman numeral 8, Board Business A, G, which is consideration of acquisition of land for the purpose of constructing a new electric department building, and the removal of the items under 1 and 2 on the Public Services. One is request authorization to raise water and sewer rates, and number 2, request authorization to increase the required amount for the water and sewer deposits, often in the form of a motion.
So, it's roughly three items, I believe?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, did everybody get what we, the motion is, take off? Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
All those in favor of removing those items, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? I have one item I'd like to delete that is under Board Business, Item E, that we will wait on that until August the 1st itself is back so that report can be given at that Any questions?
So, you want to hold the report on that?
That's right, until August the 1st. Any other changes anyone would like to make or have foreseen on this? Do we have an approval now of these changes of the official agenda? No, we just made a motion and we approved the removal of items.
Oh, okay, I thought it's motion and approval of the agenda.
I didn't hear the amendment, excuse me. No particular comments from the mayor, other than, and I'll begin to do this, I went to a meeting this afternoon pertaining to future housing, and it seems to be that some of the industries that are about to grow in the area here, that we have a potential of the area, let me make that very clear, of the area, of increasing in the next five years approximately 2,000 new jobs that will be quote "in the area," and that potentially that we could have a housing shortage. It's always good news when you have lots of vacant apartments and so forth, but I think I have been saying for a long time that our city, our fair city, is on the verge of really about to having some very exciting things to happen. Do any of the Board of Aldermen have any comments on that? Have you had an opportunity to please look at the minutes, and do we have an approval of the minutes of July the 5th?
Mr. Mayor, Board, I would move approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of July 5, 2006.
Second. We have a motion to second. All those in favor of approving the minutes of July the 5th, 2006, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes. This brings us down to the segment of our, to citizen comments. This is a time in which we allow citizens to give three minutes of expression of whatever they'd like to talk about. The floor is now open for citizen comments. Yes, sir.
Bill Stark, and I'd just like to comment on the burning moratorium. If the moratorium itself changed our situation and we can't burn at all in the city, and we've had some good rain in the last few days, and the, they're ideal conditions now for burning, and we've got a lot of brush to burn, and if we could just have the moratorium lifted, it would really be helpful. That's my situation, and I'm sure there are other people who would like to burn some brush and that sort of thing, but it's, it seems like with no wind and with the rain, it's a good time to burn, and if we could lift that, then we could go on with our work. That's, I just would like you to consider that if you would. Thank you.
Yes, I'd like to speak to the burning ban issue, and I have a proposal here I'd like to make.
Sure.
I don't know what the procedure is.
Well, just hand it here, and I'll pass it out this direction, and...
In essence, I think there's a number of alternatives that could be considered, certainly if you have...
Excuse me, sir, could you tell us who you are?
Sure. My name is James Miller.
Okay, Mr. Miller.
I live at 1436 Pinecrest Road. There's a number of alternatives to the burning ban. Obviously, I don't think any of us would want to burn when there's a situation that either some official, appropriate official declares that there's a burning ban on, but in my case, I have almost three acres of yard with about 30 trees, and there's constantly leaves, pine needles, combs, sticks, dead limbs, et cetera, and I've placed those on the street side numerous times, and they are not picked up, so I don't have any alternative. There's no place to put this material. My proposal would be one that I think would be in the best interest of both the citizenry as well as the city, and I urge you to read that and hopefully consider it.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for bringing us something. Alvin, how are you this evening?
All right.
Tell us your name where everybody knows who you are.
My name's Alvin Turner. Citizens have some concerns. They are only concerned about the November 7 election. We have jurisdictions, we have school board members, we have the court of appeal, we have those things to be concerned about, we have centers to represent, and so a lot of the concern would be November 7 election. A lot of them would not, probably not come out to the other election. The people are concerned about the police and the electric department. The electric department is in a dangerous place. Those things slow them down, but the curve is still dangerous. The police thing, and we really want to see that done, we really don't want to argue another year, because when you have people on a two-story building shooting a shot going, that's dangerous.
Anyone else would like to say something? Yes, sir.
Yes, Randall McMillan, coming on behalf of the Plantation Homeowners Association. I'm president of that homeowners association. Mr. Mayor, Board of Aldermen, thank you for listening. I just want to say that we've had a very successful pilot recycling program of our own. I want to endorse the idea that this Board is considering a committee to establish a possible program. I'll describe it briefly. We do it the second Saturday of each month. We've been doing this for two years, is myself and Charlotte Fuquay, for the most part. Occasionally, when we're out of town, we have other neighbors chipped in. We've had 30% of the households in our neighborhood participating, and that's been pretty much consistent from the beginning. We have 100 homes, more or less, in our neighborhood. What has gone up is the volume of material that we're hauling off. When we started doing this, we could do it in the back of my truck, which is a small Toyota, and now we do it in the truck, plus a 6x10 trailer, which is usually overflowing. Stan Sheridan at Startwell Recycles had met us out there several times and helped us to offload all the stuff. He suggested bringing a container to our neighborhood, they drop it off, and one of our neighbors is kind enough to let us use her driveway, so now on the second Saturday, we still do the pickup, but we drop it off in the neighborhood. We don't have to drive out to the industrial park. The Startwell Recycles is very, very helpful with that, and if anybody misses, which they always do because we do it at 8 o'clock in the morning, then they can go drop it off I've even noticed people from outside of our neighborhood, you know, bringing their materials there, and they drop the, Startwell Recycles drops the container off, a very big one, by truck. On Friday, they pick it up on Monday. I assume they knew this, not just out of the kindness of their heart, but because they're making enough off of the material that we're filling it with to make it worth their while. We put signs out, we only do this once a month, so people are doing this despite the fact they have to save up a month's worth of recycling in their house, which I know is one of the concerns. A lot of people say they don't want to save junk in their carport, but, you know, if we did it once a week, there'd be hardly any material saved up. We're doing it once a month, and people still participate, and that's with unlimited nearly garbage pickup twice a week. I mean, I've never seen anybody put so many bags out that they wouldn't pick them up, so that, despite all that, we're still getting great, great participation in this. And this month, Charlotte's been out of town, and she'd be with me tonight, and I forgot to put the signs out because they're in her carport. We usually put them out on Wednesday to remind everybody on that Saturday, and we had three people call me on the following Saturday asking me why I didn't come pick up their recycling, and these are people I could almost guarantee weren't recycling before we started this program. So, I would say that, in my opinion, it's a success. We were going to do it for six months and see how it worked. We've been doing it for two years. The only unsuccessful part is that I'm still doing it. I would rather the city did. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Angela Stewart, 4H Club, here in Starkville, Mississippi. Our 4H Club, the local 4H Club with the Longview Disciples, we've been doing recycling part of the community prior project, and we started this last year, and we've been doing it at three different locations, at the hotel, at my place of employment, and the children is doing it out of their homes. We've been collecting everything from newspaper, plastics, aluminum cans. It's very costly, but being part of the community prior project, they've helped us allow to get containers to store these in, and then I take them over in my truck to the Startwell Recycling, and we're still doing it. It would really be a help if we could get a large-scale program going here in Starkville. It would make it a lot easier for the children and the other people in the community who would like to participate in recycling. I've also spoke to the apartment manager at Crossgate, and there are people at Crossgate that would like recycling, there are several of us over there that do it, and they also would like a larger-scale recycling program going so we can participate in it.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Sarah Coleman. I live in Ward 1, but Mr. Davis isn't here. At the previous council meeting on July 5th, I commented about my concerns over the fluoridation of water in the City of Starkville. At the end of that meeting, there was a report on the value of fluoride added to the City of Starkville Water System given by Mr. Doug Devlin. As I was unable to respond to the report at that meeting, I would like to do so now. Mr. Devlin made the comment that he was unaware of the maximum allowable level of fluoride in water. I may educate the Board, the body which regulates the maximum level of various contaminants in water is the Environmental Protection Agency. Under the Safe Water Drinking Act, the EPA is required to establish exposure standards for contaminants in public water systems that might cause any adverse effects on human health. These standards include the maximum contaminant level goal and the secondary maximum contaminant level. The maximum contaminant level goal is a health goal set at a concentration at which no adverse health effects are expected to occur, and the margin of safety are deemed adequate. For some contaminants, the EPA also establishes a secondary maximum contaminant level, which is a guideline for managing drinking water for aesthetic, cosmetic, or technical effects. The maximum contaminant level goal for fluoride is four parts per million, and the secondary maximum contaminant level is two parts per million. And according to the 2004 water report card issued by our city, the level of fluoride in Starkville water was 2.13 parts per million, which is more than the secondary maximum contaminant level of two parts per million, and is what prompted me to call Alderman Davis in the first place. The research which Mr. Devlin quoted from in his report is several years old, and considering the new research there has been in recent years, it can hardly be relied upon for a decision by the council of whether or not to continue fluoridation of community water systems. For instance, Mr. Devlin did not mention the recent report by the National Research Council, which was commissioned by the EPA to evaluate the adequacy of the maximum contaminant level goal and the secondary maximum contaminant level in protecting children and others from adverse health effects. The committee looked at the most recent science surrounding fluoride and concluded unanimously that the present maximum contaminant level goal for fluoride should be lowered. They ruled that it clearly puts children at risk for developing severe enamel fluorosis and is not likely to protect against bone fracture. The committee's ruling is included in the paperwork which I gave to Alderman Davis and which he then distributed to you. This report will undoubtedly change the way fluoride is treated in the U.S. Maximum levels in coming years will probably be reduced, but we all know how slowly the wheels of government turn. Now that the Board has this knowledge, I think it would be irresponsible not to act and remove fluoride from our water until the EPA has fully researched and determined new safer levels. Mr. Devlin also did not mention any of the epidemiological evidence which shows that ingestion of fluoride does not cause teeth to be more resistant to decay. Mr. Devlin quoted statistics of 30 to 50% less tooth decay in areas with fluoridation. However, these statistics sound a little better than they actually are. I have looked at the studies, and included many in the information which you have, and in most cases, the actual decay difference is less than one cavity per mouth. And to give a quick math lesson, the statistical difference between one half cavity and one cavity is 50%, but that's still only half of a cavity, which hardly seems like grounds to continue advocating putting a known toxin in water which has potential to ruin an entire mouthful of teeth when neither Medicaid nor most dental insurances will pay to correct the damage. That says nothing of the other health effects of fluoride, including bone problems, kidney failure, and cancer. There were also some comments made by members of the Board and the mayor last week about fluoride rinses which were applied when they were in elementary school. As I said then, and will repeat, the health risks of fluoride are not from its topical application. Fluoride does damage to teeth, bones, and other bodily systems only when it is swallowed. The rinses which Alderwoman self-credited for her mouthful of strong teeth may have helped, but that is only because they were applied to the teeth and then rinsed and spit out.
Excuse me, ma'am, you had more than three minutes.
I'm sorry, okay.
And that I'll have to call a halt.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, and if citizens wish to speak for longer than three minutes, you have the prerogative to get on to the agenda for your presentation for anything that would be longer.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Sir, I have a question regarding the stormwater ordinance.
Yes.
Would that be heard later in the meeting, or is that to be...
Yes, we have a public hearing just for the stormwater ordinance.
Mayor and Board of Aldermen, thank you for your time. My name is David Jackson. I just wanted to follow up a little bit on the burn policy that we discussed a couple of weeks ago, and just in my discussion with several individuals, I don't feel that burning issues have been to a scale that is, to a point where these type of movements or measures need to be taken at this point. I think with the situations that did occur, I think they were addressed, and they were taken care of, and pretty much put behind us, and I would like to see that, see the fire department make, continue to make decisions, as they've done in the past, on allowing burn permits, freezing the burn permits in situations that may be dry, but letting the fire department make decisions like they've done in the past with the policies, with the permits that they've allowed, that they may put those on hold or continue to burn. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, I'm Robert Gunn.
How are you tonight, Mr. Gunn?
I'm fine, I think. When you get my age, you have to think before you say. I have some property on Greensboro Street, several acres, and I would like the Board to consider lifting the moratorium on the burn policy for at least a short period of time, since there was very little time given before the last meeting when a moratorium was put on the burning. And I'd also like for the Board to understand that if you don't, that there are a lot of people in the City of Starkville who can't burn regardless. In other words, they're not 50 feet where they can seek a permit, but there are many of us who are, and I would appreciate it if the Board would consider letting the same permits stay in effect, and if they choose to raise the cost of the building permit, then that's something else that they might consider, since I heard it said that there was no money made on it. I don't know if they're interested in making money, but I think the fire chief said it last time when we were here, that he really had no complaints about burning policy as it was. I think you're very kind.
Thank you, Mr. Gunn. Anyone else this time would like to speak their piece?
I'd like to, Richard Mullinick, sir.
How are you doing tonight, Richard?
I'd like to speak to Item H, recycling. In fact, I'm happy to see that this is on the agenda, and hopefully that y'all will implement this committee. I see several, what I would consider fragmented efforts around town on recycling. Dr. McMillan just explained one, what they're doing in his location, his subdivision, and our president here in church has been doing the first Saturday for a long time, recycling at the recycling center, and we have helped a good number of people, elderly people in particular, who cannot unload and load their recyclables, they do come out, and we help them. I think what we have here is several efforts going around town, and I think we could concentrate these into one effort, and I think the committee would be appropriate to make these recommendations to y'all, so I would support that, so thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Thank you for all the public comments that we had this evening. We always appreciate, sometimes we like to say that, you know, we, the citizens are not interested in the city, and certainly tonight, we've had that interest shown. We do have some public appearances that were scheduled and put on the agenda. Ron Crossman, are you here to make a presentation, or to present the application for the purpose bike grant, path grant?
Mr. Mayor, Board of Aldermen, thank you very much. I want to bring your attention, on the table, not in the packet, to a one-page sheet called "City of Starkville, MSU Starkville in Motion, East-West Lynn Lane Multi-Use Connector." And then below that, you will find the application packet to MDOTs, and I think that, I'll try to move pretty quickly, if you could turn to page 5 in the MDOT application, you'll find a color map of the proposed route. And what I just wanted to do was very quickly hit the high points of this application packet. The project itself is a proposed 3.4-mile path which clearly connects neighborhoods with schools, parks, and the MSU campus, and those represented by the brown clovers on the map, indicating different residential neighborhoods or different activity centers. It would be a multi-use path, it would be physically separate from the street, providing protection and safety to anyone using it, and be used by both sides. anyone using it and be used by both cyclists, runners, joggers, and walkers. The affected populations are quite a few in the city of Starkville. It would link children and families with the sportsplex and McKee Park. It would also link children to Starkville High School and Starkville Academy. It would provide access for university students to MSU's campus. Children attending the Boys and Girls Club and just families and adults throughout Starkville would be able to use this path, which would connect to other paths on the MSU campus already. Now, the public support for this has been pretty broad. Project has been supported by Mississippi State University, which has agreed to partner with us and provide some of the funding for this project, because the project will actually extend onto campus, connecting to the heart of MSU's campus. Starkville in Motion, of course, is in support of this because we're in support in general of a healthy lifestyle of cycling, running, those sorts of things. And we are willing to take on the responsibility for a public education and awareness campaign to go in tandem with this particular project. And then finally, the Boys and Girls Club have also shown their support in a letter in the packet. It's also in line with a recent survey that was done, Satisfaction of Life in Starkville. More than 75 percent of Starkville citizens think that Starkville should have more bike paths, which is in line with what we're proposing here. Now, the finances, the total project would be approximately $1.5 million. And this is an 80/20 match between the city of Starkville and MDOT. MDOT would provide 80 percent of the funding, we would match 20 percent. The city's portion of this, because remember, MSU is providing some of this, would be $1.37 million. So that means that our match would be approximately $136,984 each year for two years. So our total match for both, and that's spread over two fiscal years. So over two years, we would match $273,969. You'll find that on page 16. And this match can be made by no donation of preliminary engineering, survey work, construction materials, donated labor, or the value of donated property. And that donated property must be used in the project itself. And finally, MSU will be responsible for approximately $161,000 of this project, as well as meeting their 20 percent match. And so I would ask the board to approve this application for submission to MDOT. Just a reminder that the deadline for this application is the end of July. And our next opportunity for funding like this would be in approximately five years. Thank you.
Do we have questions from the board members?
Well, I think first, we should commend Starkville in Motion and its volunteers and, of course, Ron in particular, for putting together this grant application. I know it was a result of literally hundreds of hours of work and included public hearings, multiple drafts, and I think importantly, it's a multi-use path that was designed by the runners, walkers, bikers, strollers, rollerbladers. It was designed by the same people who were going to use it. And because the city doesn't have a grant writer, Starkville in Motion had to take a pretty significant role in a process that we don't hope that other people have to repeat, but we sure are glad that you did it. This, in my mind, is one of those giant step forward, if we were able to win this grant, to provide safe walking and biking in the city. And I'd like to make a motion that we approve it, but I also want to allow for any questions that the members might have.
Do you have any other people have questions or... Thanks. Did you get the proportion of the bollards worked out?
Yes, we did.
Okay, excellent.
And I think it's important to note, of course, the city worked very hard on this as well, both with former city engineer Bill Webb. Also, Kerry helped us with some additional work here recently, Ms. Spruill and others. It was a rather large effort. It's a mini, mini-page application, and it is due on the 31st.
So you're making that in form of a motion?
I'd move that we approve the grant application and authorize the mayor to submit this application on behalf of the city to the Mississippi Department of Transportation.
Second?
We have a motion with a second. Do we have any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, say no. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Our next presentation is from Mrs. Joan Wilson on the status of capital improvements for the Octavia Hall County Heritage Museum.
Sitting with me is Mary Thornton, the vice president, and you'll see that we have several of the museum board and interested people here. I did get a mini packet to you, which really was a report done several years ago about the status of museums. And your opening remark is good, that the city is growing, and that's a real positive thing. But the museum needs some attention now. We can't continue as we are. We've been existing for many years on the bare bones budget, and if you looked at our budget proposal this year, you'll see that we are extremely frugal with what we get. We are ready now to renovate, rejuvenate the museum and the exhibits. We've had consultation from professional museum planners through a grant through the Department of Humanities. But the building is owned by the city, and we feel like it is time for the city to realize that and take some responsibility for it. The report that I printed up for you was concerning the drainage problems, and that one was done in 1998. I did not give you the other one I have, which Fred Blocker did in '02, which shows even more problems. I always say that kids would like to come in the museum and use their rollerblades or their skateboards on our floor, because it's like this. And we have problems with the porch. We're afraid people are going to trip on the ramp as you go up, so that's a dangerous thing. And we just need the Board of Alderman to take some interest in the museum. The future of Starkville looks good, but we don't want to neglect its history and its past. So that's what I have to say, and now if you would ask me some questions, maybe I could answer a few.
Other questions from any of the Alderman at this particular time?
Jim, could you share with us a little of the historical importance of the building itself?
Well, and I may need some help from the background. The building was originally a depot in Starkville and was moved through the bicentennial in, like, '75 to its present location, which is an urban renewal project. It opened in 1979. And for those of you who have come to visit us, and there are few of you have, we really are collecting some great historical features of Starkville. One of our most important ongoing ones at the moment is what Ruth Morgan is doing with capturing the historical houses and buildings in Starkville before they're gone. And Boy Scouts have loaned us a computer. Now, the theater's going to give us one. They're all computers, so we scrap to get what we want done. But we really think it's important to not let this history go. But we need, the building needs some help.
Other questions from other board members?
And it'd be fair to say that the, kind of the ongoing annual funding request that we've already submitted does not cover the repairs to the building?
No, we get, people outside of Starkville, when we've been to museum meetings, are just a tad shocked on what we survive on. We have maybe $5,000 that isn't spent at the moment, but that has to carry us through till November when we get city and county funding. So that has to be our utilities. Say we have a breakage of something. I don't know if many of you know Fred Blocker, but he kind of takes care of our building and thank heavens, he has a lot of barnyard engineering, because he can put that thing together with wire and tape that I couldn't. Plus, he doesn't mind climbing underneath. I won't do that.
And he climbs in the attic.
Yeah, we do have some restricted funds, which is like $600, but that is from the Starkville Area Arts Council and a private gift, and we're saving that to work on the exhibits. Maybe buy some paint.
I think, excuse me, I think you need to be aware of the scope of the problem, too. Our, we have a leak. I don't know if it comes from the air conditioner up there, which also needs to be replaced, or if it comes from the roof, but we're getting a, you know, spot up in the top. The floor desperately needs to be fixed. And it's just, it's a shame to let a building like that fall apart. And I wonder if it could be put on the historical register so we can't be, we can't just let it fall down.
I was going to say, I've been out there two or three times and sent my award, and it's something that, I know that there had been some damage to it, and I saw some of the mild damage myself. I didn't realize how extensive it was till I read your report. Do you have an idea yet of any particular cost or amount of services that you're in need of?
I haven't had time to do that. I just know we... My point is, I've worked now with the museum since, for two or three years. And we began, I began when the first of the last administration was leaving. So we thought, well, let's give them some time to get out. And then the new administration came on, well, let's give them some time to get situated. Well, now, it's time, and we're ready, as Dan knows. So it's, we just really need to get serious about it. Either help us or don't, if we don't get help, if we don't get interest from the board, then it's not going to work. That's the bottom line.
Any other questions from the board members?
Of course, this a bicentennial project that the city and county at that time saw bid to support and have helped it limp along since then. I think the ladies are correct. It's time to put up, shut up about the museum, and it provides a preservation of a piece of history of Octavia Hall County that's not going to be preserved anywhere else. And of course, it seems to me that we need to start developing cost estimates
Yeah.
For the projects. Of course, the absence of a city engineer, though we have a consulting city engineer at the moment, we need to start developing some cost estimates for all the various elements in the repair work.
Well, I have given Fred Blocker's report to the city engineer two or three times and just, we just need to get moving. Or, like I say, it's just, it's just the time to get moving with it or tell us that you're not going to, so we can volunteer our time somewhere else.
Give the stuff back to them.
Yeah.
And something that many in the community were very excited about is a bicentennial project, and we need to see those kinds of commitments through.
If it makes sense with the board, you know, we are right in the middle of the budget season and we're already considering the ongoing request. I think we'd be happy to take a look at this and work with the museum on putting together those cost estimates and putting together time on it.
Is there, is there a member of the board that would be interested in working with us? So I've worked a lot with Lynn, and she's been a big help, but I need somebody to go to to say, hey, we have this problem. I don't know what division of the city to ask about this.
I'd be willing to lend my hand.
Great, okay. Because even like getting these estimates, you know, what do you want, what do you need?
Very good.
There's also the problem with the, for example, on the ramp. If someone falls and gets hurt, since everything belongs to the city, it would be a shame for them to sue. And if they sued us, I'm sorry, they wouldn't get anything.
Well, again, ain't they sued the city?
It belongs to the city.
Yeah, I understand.
Well, thank you very much. I'm encouraged. I'll be talking to you. You, you're the one who put, okay.
Thank you.
I have your email address. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Ms. Miller, you're here tonight, and I believe you have a presentation for us as well.
I have a guest with me tonight. And I brought visual aids. I didn't know the PowerPoint was going to be up, or we'd have done it on that. Thank you all for having me tonight. My name is Brickley Miller, and I manage the Mississippi Horse Park, for those of you that don't know. My guest tonight is Dr. Al Miles. A lot of times, y'all hear me talk about economic impact numbers, and you probably think I'm just that smart, I can figure that kind of stuff out, but I can't. I got to have a little help from my friends. And Dr. Miles is a 20-year extension professor with Mississippi State University. He's been in the Community Resource Development Department and recently is in the Agricultural Economics Department. And he has authored a number of articles in state, regional, and national publication and helped secure more than $4 million in grants, loans, business development, childcare, housing, and other infrastructure needs in the state. And he's going to explain to you a little bit, before I start my presentation, about the economic impact template that he designed for us.
Thank you, Brickley, and it's an honor for me to be here tonight. And Brickley asked me to come and share with you briefly something about the economic impact model that we use to analyze the activities that occur at the Mississippi Horse Park. And Mr. Mayor, you know, we get asked question all the time about, you know, we're anticipating, you know, a 500-man plan. What's the impact of that plan on our community? So we do lots of things like that. This project that Brickley is involved in and will share with you tonight, I know you've seen the results many times, but it actually started back in 1999 with Mr. Webb Flowers. At the time, Webb came out and visited with me and was talking about, he wanted to know something about the economic impact of activities that occur there at the Mississippi Horse Park. And as we got involved in this, we later discovered that this was a question that facility managers all over the state and even the nation in that regard were grappling with. How do we, how do we assess the economic impact or the value of activities that occur at facilities like these? And so I spent probably three months with Mr. Flowers and then later with Ms. Miller, putting together an economic impact model specifically looking at the activities at the Mississippi Horse Park. Once we finished with that, that was interesting, and so we shared it with other managers around the country. Basically, what we did was, we tried to structure the model so it was very user-friendly and that it took into account activities and the information that occurred there at the Agri Center. And it basically is divided into components so that a user can go in and put in the information, and once they fill in the information in terms of what we call a data input section, then from there, it automatically calculates projected impacts on food and beverage sales, lodging, gasoline sales, and other miscellaneous retail purchases. And then from there, we take and estimate what we think are the tax impacts in terms of retail sales. In some cases, there may be some property taxes and so forth. And those are basically the things that the model does. We do some things by way of a summary report, which looks at summarizing the number of activities that occurs at the facility, the length of those activities, and how many participants participated in those activities. All of those things give us the data that we use to populate the model and estimate the economic impact. And so basically, without getting too detailed, that's basically how the model works. I will say this, whatever information Ms. Miller might share with you tonight is probably an underestimate of the true impact out at the horse park, because the model has not been updated since 2000, I believe. So I guess what I'm saying, you know, it's probably going to be an underestimate of the true value of the economic impact of those activities at the horse park. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Miller.
Thank you all. I wanted to talk to you tonight a little bit about what we've been doing at the horse park this year and what we've got planned for next year, and what we've still got left to do this year. Every year, we have a plan. What are we going to do? How are we going to get bigger and better? You know, it's like a business plan out there, but how are we going to benefit people? And this year, I will have to say that we've seen a lot of change in community involvement. And I'm going to share with that throughout the presentation with y'all, how that's happened this year. And that wasn't something that we really planned. It's just something that seems to finally have happened. We started off the year in January. The first event that we had was January the 4th through the 7th. And we target a lot of weekends where there's not people in town, because the community can't handle us and a football game at the same time. So we do a lot of off weekends. Well, we started off the year, the 4th through the 7th of January, with a barrel fraternity. And what a barrel fraternity is, when I say the word fraternity, I'm going to use it more than one time in the presentation, is it's a younger animal. And what a barrel fraternity does is people come and they race for a pot of money. So this particular event, that was a four-day event, was the very first event we had. It sold out the horse park completely. It sold out the horse park completely. Um, we had contestants from seventeen states and the furthest contestant came from Kansas. So you think, what would make people drive this far? Well, actually, the total payout of this event in four days, y'all, was seventy-three thousand, seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars. This gentleman on the front row right here, on this picture, he won over seventy-five hundred dollars that weekend. So that's what makes people come to our community, come to these events. A lot of times is the amount of prize money that's added to these events. So we're very excited, the very first weekend of the year, to sell out. What a way to start the year. Well, we turned back around with motocross. How many of you got, got in at motocross? So for the first event this year, we had two sellouts. I had never in my life, I've been out there since two thousand, been able to go to the promoter and say, y'all were sold out. No more coming to the doors. Thirty minutes before the event started, we started turning people away. We went to the gate, didn't make them get out of their cars, turned away a thousand people that night for motocross. And so we're really excited, this promoter, I've grown with him over the years. He brought a freestyler with him that did three reverse backflips in the air. You know, I've had a lot of people that didn't know what motocross was when we started doing it out there. And now they love to come out for that. We're really excited, they're rebooked for next year. And they're gonna come for two nights next year instead of one. And the economic impact of this particular event was over three hundred and forty thousand dollars. We started off in February with a new event. We've got some good old ones, but we got some great new ones. This is team pinning. And this event came in nineteen ninety-nine and it was before the facility was completely, all the amenities were finished. And it took me all these years to get them to come back. And it's where a team of people, they go in and they sort cattle. There's a bunch of cattle loose in the arena and you, they call out the number three and your team goes and gets all the number threes out. Well, this particular event, when I got them here in February, they were so impressed with the facility and the amenities of our communities, they have been, they scheduled two more events, including the regional finals in October. So we were really excited to get this new two-day event in the facility. Then, do y'all remember in February where the media, media said, go to the grocery store, buy your groceries? You know, cause it's gonna freeze over this weekend. Do y'all remember that? Well, I can tell you Friday night, people weren't at the grocery store. You see this picture? That's the rodeo Friday night. You see them sitting in the steps? Friday night was kids' night, kids twelve and under getting absolutely free for the rodeo. Great family event, saw thirty-five percent increase in ticket sales. Community involvement on Friday night. Um, tremendous event, coming back again next year, great show. Stock contractors from Texas, been PRCA Stock Contractor of the Year. Um, great guy, does a great show, he'll be back again. Then in March, that's when we start our equine events. And people that know what equine is, that's horses. And, um, we go, we went eleven weekends in a row when we started in March. We started off the March, um, run with the Tennessee Walking Horse Show. And that was done by the Shriners this year. And there's a lot of events out there that we have that are charity events. And I don't have to tell you what the Shriners do. Um, but we also have things for St. Jude's and for other, benefit other groups. This is the largest specific breed show that we have, is the Tennessee Walking Horse Show. Was a two-night event. Um, its economic impact was eighty-six thousand dollars. Um, they are coming back next year. We were very excited to work with the Shriners. It was a wonderful event and benefited a whole lot of people in our community. We went through March and ran on with a few more shows and came back with another sellout event. We ended March with another sellout. Um, the March Madness, the BHA Super Show. This particular event, y'all, we had twelve hundred and fifty-nine contestants for this three-day event. That's not including their families and friends that came with them. Well, what makes you think, made them drive that far? Money. Um, it was a big pot of added money in there. We had contestants from as far away as New York, thirteen states represented. Um, we had a thirty-five percent increase in growth in contestants. This is Cass Dowing, she is from Illinois. And she made four runs that weekend at the horse park. You know, they race against a timer around the barrels. And in less than a minute, she won over thirty-five hundred dollars. Her and her grandfather were there for the first time and you can bet they've come back every time since. So another great event. Then we changed gears a little bit. Some of the other events that we did, we went on the harness race and we had the five-k furry race out on the harness track. Y'all see that? People up there racing their dogs. This was a benefit race for the Humane Society, raised over a thousand dollars through the student chapter for the Octavia Hawkeye, I mean, the Humane Society, Octavia Hawkeye County. Then we go on through June. We end up, we start June with what I call the grandmother of our barrel races. This was the one that kinda started it all off. And I don't know if y'all have heard me talk about that we have four events that are ranked in the top fifty in the nation now at the horse park. And I mean, that's by the national statistics last year. And this was kinda the one that fueled the fire. Um, in this particular, uh, uh, picture, this is Dana Haas, she's from The Keel. Um, at the last race at the horse park on this particular weekend, the promoter puts up a twenty-five hundred dollar check. The top fifteen fastest times of the weekend get to run for that check. So you can imagine how exciting it is, winner take all. Dana Haas, she's an eleventh grader from down at The Keel, she won it. We had actually, um, let's see, the payout was, uh, for the year so far in barrel races. At the horse park, when we got to this event, was a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars that people had won at the horse park coming barrel racing. So you can understand why they come out there. She won over seventy-five hundred that weekend. This eleventh grader did, there were eight states represented. And this is an annual six-year event. You can see that it is a family activity, that's what happens out there. And I don't know how many of you got to come out for the PBR. We just had PBR. Now, we didn't just have another bull riding, we had professional bull riding, like you see on TV. And you got to see riders like Tater Porter and Casey Hayes win checks. But the biggest thing to me was Friday afternoon, this is Donny Gay. Y'all know who that is? Eight-time world champion, commentating on TV for years and year, Donny Gay, Donny Gay, y'all know? Anyway, I think he originated, get her done. Have y'all ever heard him say it? I think the cable guy just took his spiel from him. But anyway, him and Jerry Nelson, which puts a lot of bulls on TV, they flew in Friday afternoon to Starkville Airport and he came in and commentated the PBR for that weekend. So that was really exciting for me to get to see him. They've rebooked again for next year, another great event for Starkville. In August, we're gonna have the Arabian Horse Show. That's a three-day event. Now, a lot of our events are free to the public. A lot of our equine events, it doesn't cost a dime for people to come out there. And I talk about community involvement. Um, it's so nice to get an email a couple of days after an event and say, hey, we came out, we really enjoyed it. Um, I've told you how many times that, uh, the Parker House, Rolling Hills, they bring the bus out there. I can't even tell you, probably six or seven times a year, and those people get to come out and participate in those events. But the Arabian Horse Show, which will be the first weekend in August, um, you'll get to see Arabian horses do everything from cut cows to run barrels to halter and pleasure. And they do the, the class where they dress all the way up in the full costume. And they also do a class that's called a freestyle, where they turn them loose to music and yee-haw, you know, and let them prance around, the proud Arabians. It's a really fun event to come to. Um, in September, we'll pick up a new event. It's the PKC Fatuity Coon Hunt. So I told you what fatuity meant. And coon hunters are people that have dogs and they go out and they chase raccoons at night. So we're actually gonna have the first one of those, they'll satellite hunt out of the facility to communities around. We're expected to have two hundred and fifty hunters there for that three-day event. We're really excited about that new event. Um, we'll have the MAFS Horse Sale. So anybody that needs a new horse can come out to the MAFS Horse Sale. Um, we'll start our classes and our therapeutic riding programs back. You know, we also do those at the horse park. In October, we'll have the, um, Regional Team Pinning Finals. We'll have another major barrel race out there, the Speed Fest Barrel Race. In November, we'll stay set up the whole time for annual production sales. We have two major production sales, those are multi-day sales scheduled out there. We also will host the MAFS Extension Conference out there at the horse park. So anybody looking for livestock can come out to the horse park in November. We'll end the, in, year up in December with the Mississippi Junior High and High School Rodeo Association. Um, that'll be another two-day event that we'll have at the horse park. Some of the other things that we've done this year that, um, we think are really important that I, since I talked to y'all last time, is when Katrina came. You know, we've always helped with victims from Katrina. This is Kyle Roberts and his pony Silver, they're from down on the coast. And Silver stayed with us for over a month, along with a lot of other families and horses, and until they could get their fences fixed. And we fed their animals for them even when they could go back. And, and we housed them at the horse park. It was a wonderful thing to be involved with. We also hosted the National Guard Welcome Back Dinner out there. And I don't know, that was the second battalion, one hundred and fourteenth artillery regiment. And that was a wonderful diversity of events that we've had out there. They're getting talking about community involvement. Um, we're just getting to do all kinds of things to service our community. Um, the other thing that we've done this year is we wanna be better. Um, uh, and we think that outside opinions are really good. So we have started the Mississippi Horse Park Advisory Committee. We meet once a quarter and we have twelve people on our advisory board. And they are Robin Fant, Don Posey, Francis Dawkins, Philip Williams, Rudy Johnson, Curtis Rice, Dan Ship, Dr. Gary Jackson, Ed Williams, Kim Parrott, Jennifer Glaze, and Lynn Spruill. And these are variety people from, stakeholders from around. These are horse owners, business entrepreneurs, and citizens from our ci- city and county. And what they'll do is they'll help us discuss things that we need to move on with or policies or procedures or how we can just better benefit the community. So, in closing, I will say, what have we done this year so far? Well, our current economic impact, y'all, is one point nine five million dollars. From last year compared to January through July of two hundred, two thousand and five, we are five hundred thousand above what we did last year already and the year is halfway over. Um, we have had continuants, contestants travel from twenty-six states to the horse park to compete and Canada this year. We have had twenty-nine events. Sixty-nine percent of those are multi-day. We've had one four-day event, seven three-day events, ten two-day events. Our events have generated seventy-eight nights of stays in hotels. Eighty-three percent of our events are repeat business, but the other seventeen percent have been new. We have gained national exposure through the four barrel races. And I'm gonna stop right there and brag on that just a little bit. Um, this is the leading publication right here for the barrel horse industry. And that's just one discipline in the equine event. Well, Mississippi has ten nationally-ranked events in their state. And they take place in Jackson, Tunica, Hattiesburg, and Starkville. And out of those ten, y'all, we host four right here in Starkville, Mississippi. Now, when you think about the big, you think about the big cowboy states. You think about Oklahoma and Texas. Well, Oklahoma only has eleven and Texas has twelve. And we have ten right here in the state of Mississippi. So that just goes to show you, and four of them are right here in our hometown. So it's really proud for me to hold this magazine up cause this is something that we've done together and accomplished. The other thing is, I talk about the millions of households that we go out to, positive press. We go out to a million households a month. This story came out about horse park and its events, and not just at our facility, but I had a lot of quotes in it about the other facilities around the state. This one, um, story right here, in the last month, went out to eighty-six thousand households in the state of Mississippi, we only have three million people, that we know of. So, and that's not counting all the ones, you know, that we don't know that it went to. And I've had a jillion people call me and said, I saw the story, it's wonderful. Um, we sold out our first spectator event already this year. We sold out two equine events where we had to house people, outsource people to stalls at other places, put porta-stalls up. In December, two thousand and five through two thousand and six, in March, we opened the facility after hours and on weekends for local general riding and harness training. Each semester, we host team therapeutic riding, we host a variety of MSU classes and activities out there. So that's what we've accomplished so far this year. But for next year, we already have eighteen major events booked, y'all, and only one's a single-day event. So we have a variety of great entertainment options already planned for next year, all the repeat. Plus, you're gonna get to see things like the Lipa's Honors next year. And I am working on an equine event right now, keep your fingers crossed. If I get it, it is a three-day event and the winner will win a du- duly, double-door, dod- dodge, crew cab truck. And imagine how many people will come and compete to win for a truck. Somebody y'all might take up western classes, I don't know. So I am projecting two thousand and seven to be even bigger and better than two thousand and six has been. Um, along in this packet, um, when we talked, when I told you a little bit about community involvement, all these in here, these are what I call letters of appreciation. And these are from our business owners, our community leaders. And I'm gonna leave you with a pack of this. And basically what these say is that the horse park affects them. And they appreciate it and I appreciate y'all. And that's what I have to say tonight. And if y'all have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Do any of the board members have questions?
Well, I don't have a question, but I, I was gonna share this a little later in the budget. But since we've had both, two tourism, uh, public speakers just talk with the, the museum and the horse park, just talk a little bit about how our sales tax revenue is done. And, um, last, uh, the last figure that we have, um, which would be the month of May, our two percent tax collection, which we think of as our tourism tax, was up twenty-two percent from the, the year before. And these type of things are really making a, a bottom-line, uh, impact on the community. And so for the ten months of our fiscal year, we're up eleven percent. And then in sales tax, uh, last, the last month that we have figures for, which would be for May, and it takes two months to get to us through the state and through reporting, it was up seventeen and a half percent, um, for a thirteen percent fiscal year improvement. So it really does pay off having all those people in our community.
Well, it does. Well, I appreciate it. It, it's, um, it's just a great positive thing and y'all can all be very proud of the horse park and your support out there. It's a great thing. And I do appreciate your support. I don't know if any, anybody else have.
Any other questions? Thank you so very much.
Thank you. I'm gonna leave y'all with one of these packs.
Okay, excellent, thank you. JR, are you here tonight? I don't see you anywhere, you are, you're here back there.
Thank you all again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Board. I'm JR Love, I'm the president of the Student Association this year. Uh, it's an honor to represent them and I'd like to, uh, discuss with y'all Bulldog Bash tonight. We have it planned for September the eighth, uh, this year. Just for a point of record on the, uh, official agenda, I think we may have a typo September the ninth. We might wanna change that. That'll be the following day, the Saturday, hopefully we'll have a, a win that day for my football team. But the, the bash will be, uh, September the eighth, that night. Um, I'll also chair this year the student body president for the state of Mississippi. And I can tell you that they inquire about this event, they wanna know how we do it. I'd welcome that question cause it's, it's fun working with the city. I thank y'all for y'all's service helping with this. Uh, I've met with the, uh, police chief and the, uh, fire chief and sanitation and electric. Uh, we need services to help, uh, pull off this event. And so I would ask, uh, tonight, uh, to partner with the city and offer y'all a sponsorship for the in-kind services that we have received in the past. Uh, this event has gone on, uh, for the last several years, it's been a tremendous success. Um, and I look forward to working with y'all.
Any question from the other?
You prepared to tell us who the acts are yet?
I am not.
Okay.
We're, we are very, we are very close though, I'll say that. We've had, uh, the same, same two students for the past several years. They've actually have moved off, but still enjoy working with this event. And so they are in Nashville now preparing acts. So I'll be excited in a couple of weeks to announce them.
Mayor and Board, then I'd like to, um, unless there's any other questions from my colleagues, to make a motion that we approve, um, the request for in-kind services from the city of Starkville for Bulldog Event Bash to be held on September ninth, two thousand and six. And just as a point of clarification, in that motion, do I need to include that we go ahead and give them right to others, to the streets, uh, close the streets off during the time?
Yes.
Then, uh, and I'd like to include in that motion that we close the streets off from, what was the time?
Six o'clock that morning.
Six AM until?
Until one. The barricades will be changed, uh, throughout the day as we have discussed with the, uh, police chief.
Okay, then from six AM until one the following?
Correct.
AM the following day.
Second. Motion for the second, all those in favor, please say aye, yea, or nay, or aye. Have a senior moment there. All those opposed?
You have a lot of those.
What can I say? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Board.
Uh, our next item is a public hearing on the proposed storm water control ordinance. Do we have anyone that would like to speak in reference to the storm water?
My name is Kenny Langley. My wife and I live at one oh six Forest Hill Drive. Um, we are currently dealing with a drainage problem, uh, that takes up, uh, residents in our front yard from time to time. We've had three in the last year alone. And, uh, there is a proposed development that may go in uphill from us. Uh, so I think we're an example of what could happen all over Starkville uh, when someone already has a drainage problem, storm. When that uphill area is naturalized, and it's natural, there's not a big problem when it's built out, that can become a very big problem very quickly, and a lot of people don't realize how exponential that increase can be. I would just like to comment, to appeal to the council to please pass this ordinance. It would be very helpful to us, and I believe people all over Starkville, to help protect them from this type of, could be damage, could be bodily harm, it could be a number of things. So, and that's mentioned in the proposed ordinance. It's from the people I've spoken with, the professionals in this field. It's not a real problem to achieve this ordinance, what the ordinance asks. Engineers do it regularly. Municipalities have already passed ordinances like this, including Brandon Oxford, Tupelo, Madison, and Jackson's, is not zero, but it's greatly reduced. I think that's about it. I just want to thank y'all and make sure you pass it. Thank you.
I forgot to say that you have about three minutes to have any statement that you'd like to say in regard to the issue on the public hearing here. Do we have other folks that would like to express themselves? You wouldn't miss a chance at all, would you?
Mayor and Board, I'm Vic Zeller, and I'd like to address this particular issue. Senator Davis asked that I would take a look at the ordinance, because I reckon I've been in too many difficult situations having to deal with these particular ordinances. The reason we have flooding problems is because people want to build in the floodplain next to the stream. They want to put a lot next to the flood, next to the stream, and use all of the available land. Plus, what usually happens is a home is built too low. There are two things that I would suggest that you look at this ordinance, that I think would greatly help it and enhance it a lot. One is to put something in it that deals with the elevation of homes next to streams. We do have the floodplain ordinances that are associated with FEMA, where they have to, the floor elevation has to be one foot above the 100-year flood, if it's in a floodzone in part of the FEMA. But there's so many smaller streams where their homes are built, where there is, in essence, no defined 100-year floodplain, and the city is not dealing with that particular issue. The other thing that I would greatly recommend is that we deal with how, what elevation buildings need to be in the floodplain, especially, for example, if you build a conventional foundation, which was mentioned with the museum, they have water problems under that building, mainly because it drains under the building, and if they were filled in under the building before they built, then you wouldn't have had that water going under there, and if they would have channeled it around the building. So I think there are a lot of other things that need to be addressed, rather than just these, I call them holes in the ground. I reckon I've never been a proponent of putting a lot of stormwater basins all over the city, because every time it rains, they're gonna fill, and they're going to be a breeding ground for mosquitoes. And so, that's something you've got to deal with. You're going to have a lot more surface water, because every time it drains, they're gonna fill up, and they will not completely empty. I don't care what you do with those particular basins. And if you go behind Lowe's, Maple Drive, you'll see this happening. So those are some comments. It's a very difficult one. You'll have to wrestle with it, but I pity the poor city engineer that has to deal with enforcing all of the rules of the ordinance. It could be very difficult for him. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Zeller. Anyone else that'd like to speak in reference to the storm drain ordinance? Storm water control. Anyone else? Then I click on the storm water control. That brings us down to the mayor's business. The mayor has no business this time. Brings us down to the board business. These are the changes, the most of the changes that were made earlier. First item we have on board business is the presentation approval of a, in a local tri-county narcotics task force agreement. Russell, I think, is here tonight.
My name is Russell Gaines. I'm the director of tri-county narcotics. Some of y'all have listened to this more times than I have, and this is my 10th time to be here. The task force operates under a federally funded BARN grant. It provides, it provides up to 75% on approved items. It's by far the lion's share of our budget. It pays the salaries, it pays the buy money, it pays the crime labs. The grant this year was approximately $260,000. It was between 260 and 270. It's been a wonderful way for us to use it as a force multiplier for law enforcement in this area for a number of years. We have done thus far this year 399 cases in the entire jurisdiction, and I think we've done approximately 125 in the city of Starkville. So it's a worthy way to spend our tax dollars. Men are doing a good job. I would hope that you would see fit to continue to fund your portion, which is $20,000. I've already been to West Point, Octibahaw, and Clay Counties, and they've already approved. This is my last stop.
Any questions from aldermen?
I would move we continue city participation in the tri-county narcotics unit, narcotics task force, authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement of participation.
Do we have a second? We have a motion with a second? All those in, did you have anyone? Did I hear somebody speaking there? All those in favor, say aye, please. All those opposed? Passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Report from the Budget Committee.
Well, the Budget Committee, which is Alderman himself, Alderman Mills, and myself, have just completed the first round of meetings with the department heads to review their budget requests. I think we met four days straight, something like that. I guess the first thing to note is, is that Boyd Greer is continuing his work on a comprehensive salary review. I know that all of us on the board have shared our concerns about addressing, addressing those issues, and certainly heard loudly from the department heads on that. We are still very early in the process, have a revenue forecast that we would expect in the first week of August. Of course, we've been hearing about all the good news from a sales tax and a, and a tourism 2% tax. So we should have some good news on the revenue side, and then we'll have a full-budget copy for the full board in the second week of August that would have all of the details. And at that point, we'd enter into work sessions together on the board to, to review some of those, some of those items. What, what we put on the table, and we literally finished our last department review earlier this afternoon, so it's a bit brief, is some of the big-ticket items, if you will, around personnel requests, as well as capital or equipment and maintenance issues. And under personnel requests, these would be additional headcount from last year. We have three firefighters requested, one maintenance worker in the landfill, four certified officers in the police force, and one administrative assistant in the sanitation department. And I will say upfront that both the landfill and the sanitation positions are probably better described as taking a part-time person full-time, because there is existing part-time assistance there today. So that isn't a full cost, but roughly, as it affects the general fund, 244,000 in increased personnel cost just from additional people, net of any retirement increases and, and cost of living adjustments, if we're able to provide them, and about 51,000 in what I would call enterprise funds, or funds that are not from the general fund, for a total of about $300,000. On the next page, talks a little bit about the capital request, and also machinery and equipment. The first being a continued renovation here in City Hall. That is something for a, both an office for the elections department, as well as a communication center, and other items. Under the clerk's office, have a proposal for a accounting software upgrade, and that is scalable. We include, and I should mention upfront that we, as a budget committee, have not made any recommendations on any of these items. We just wanted to present them, because the numbers are significant. Under the drinking water division, looking at a Curry Street plant rebuild, that will be a little over half a million dollars. Under fire, of course, we have the first installment of our ladder truck, which is a little over $100,000. And rather innovatively, if, if I might say, the chief knows that we need an additional ladder truck to service the western areas, and he's worked with, I guess, the state review board to actually make repairs to our existing ladder truck and extend the life of that, of that vehicle, as opposed to having to go out and purchase a new one immediately. We don't have our final cost associated if the justice complex was approved, but did want to include that as, as a potential budget impact item. Landscaping, we need to replace our street sweeper. It is quickly dying. It's almost $200,000. Parking rack needs a replacement mower. Police has a building remodel for additional office space here in City Hall as a contingency. Sanitation, containers and a limb loader piece of equipment, potentially $150,000. And the last two items are in wastewater and water, and they deal with issues in pumping stations and pumps, as well as some other varying equipment. So, from a general fund standpoint on capital machinery, our requests have come in, about $450,000 in addition to where they were funded last year, and a million dollars in our, what we consider enterprise, which would be sanitation and water, for a total of about $1.5 million. And as rosy as we expect the revenue forecast to be, I would expect the, the requests from department heads will exceed, in other words, our expenses of providing services would exceed those revenues, and so we'll, as a board, will have to, to review that and make the appropriate decisions.
Any of the aldermen have questions at this time? Thank you very much. We'll move on to the report from the technology. Do you have a question? Yeah, let's, let's do that.
Mr. Mayor and Board, Mr. Wally is here from Jackson, has a long crisp night. If no one has objection, why don't we move those items up, which would be eight D and eight I, so he can be on about his business.
Any questions with us moving that up? Do we have a motion on these two items, the resolutions?
I'm gonna offer a motion on item, I, I when we get to it. Go ahead and take D up first, or I, whichever one.
All right.
You do I now, or D?
We'll do D first, then. Do we have a motion to, for the distribution of $2 million electric system revenue bonds? I think this is something that we need to go ahead and do. This is a timely issue. Is that not right, Randy?
That's correct, Mayor. What that does is that allows us to distribute the financial information to bidder, so that you'll get bids on the first. Otherwise, we're not going to be able to award any bids.
Mr. Mayor and Board, you will recall that at the last board meeting, the board voted unanimously to approve issuance of these electric, excuse me, it was not, it was five to two. I stand corrected. Voted by overwhelming majority to approve the issuance of the electric department bonds. The finishing of the issuance started some time ago. So I would move adoption of a resolution approving and authorizing the distribution of a preliminary official statement, authorizing the execution and distribution of an official statement pertaining to the sale of $2 million electric system revenue bond, series 2006, of the city of Starkville, Mississippi, authorizing the execution of a continuing disclosure certificate pertaining to said bonds and for related purposes.
And these are federal requirements. It's, as you suggested earlier, it's a technical requirement.
Okay. Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
We have a motion with a second. We have any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? How many ayes we have? And two nays? The second one is consideration of a resolution called an election for $9 million general obligation bonds for the police and the court's justice complex.
Mr. Mayor, the full board has already approved this at the last meeting, and this is just a technical implementation of the board order. It's already received unanimous approval. And I offer this resolution in the form of a motion. I'm just gonna read the heading, Mr. Mayor. This is a resolution calling and providing for the holding of an election within the city of Starkville, Mississippi, at which time there should be submitted to the qualified electors of said municipality, a proposal for the issuance of general obligation bonds, and the principal amount not to exceed $9 million, to raise money for the purpose of erecting municipal buildings and purchasing buildings or land therefor, and for repairing, improving, adorning, and equipping the same, including without limitation, a police station and municipal court facility, and as in the form of a motion.
We have a motion with a second. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? That carries by. All vote. All those present. Thank you very much. Have a safe trip home.
Thanks, sir.
We'll come back now to a report from the technology committee. Want to do the committee first, and then break, and then break down? We're gonna have a break.
The passage of time. We have shared your joy at the birth of your children, and proudly, we have watched them grow. We've taken care of your health care needs during the good times and the not-so-good. Your parents and grandparents have depended upon us. Together, we have shared the struggles and the wonders of life. At Octibahaw County Hospital, we are celebrating 30 years of being your lifelong choice in health care.
So what the lady did? We begin our recess meeting. We will now have a report from the technology committee.
All right. The technology committee met last week, and I provided in front of you a report concerning that and some other things we had discussed. One of the first things we did is, because we kind of experimented with a couple of different days, we formalized that we were gonna go ahead and meet from now on, on the second Thursday of every month at 3:00 in the conference room at City Hall, in case anyone is, has anything they want to provide for those meetings, or has an interest in At a previous meeting of our board, we approved an audit of our phone lines through a telecom audit group, and through Al Quinn, we were able to get somewhat of an update, and he estimates that we will save around $15,000 annually through the audit that they're currently doing on our phone lines. Now, I say estimate, because the organization is, or the group is supposed to actually give a formal presentation at the first meeting in August with some actual hard numbers on that, so that we can have an idea where we go from there. But as it stands right now, they're standing to save us around $15,000 annually. The board also previously authorized Patrick Miller to work on and redesign a new website for the city. He began work on that on July 5th, and we have asked that he were to be present at all future tech committee meetings until the website's completion, to give us an update that we will then report to y'all. One of the other things that we discussed, and has been sort of ongoing, was the feasibility of wireless internet in Starkville. It's something that some other more technol, technically-oriented cities have done, and it's something that we have, I know I've had an interest in doing for this community. So we had a gentleman by the name of Shamath Weezer Warden, who is an employee of the hospital, and has worked on setting up the wireless network there. And he gave us sort of a, an overview on the feasibility of doing a similar network here in Starkville. One of the things he emphasized was that- And one of the things he emphasized was that due to various limitations with the technology involved, coverage of the entire city would be next to impossible because it would require so many different antennas and access points. The standard use doesn't have a great amount of penetration, so one thing he emphasized was that what we should do is try to take certain key areas and focus on those, and then maybe expand out from there. And sort of as an example, I had attached in the report on page three, a map, a partial map of the university that shows areas of coverage on campus, just to kind of illustrate, and I know this doesn't show up as well in black and white, but just sort of to illustrate that you need to kind of provide, try to provide it in most, in key areas, places where it'd be used the most, and then maybe move out from there. So one of the things that our committee wants to do is to meet with Ed Hadaway of the Starkville Electric Department and see if it would be possible to run a test from the Electric Department to see about possibly providing some sort of wireless for the downtown area, however, that, of course, will be much further down the line, and our committee will, of course, come back and present further reports to the entire board as we make more progress on that. This is sort of early preliminary, just sort of looking into the feasibility of it. The last thing that I, that we had discussed was, there was an issue that had come up with our hosting services for our website, and this is a separate thing from the website itself. We had, I had previously recommended to the board that we switch services from bellsouth.net to godaddy.com, which is an internet host, because it would save us a large amount of money every month. We pay, we currently pay about a hundred dollars monthly for our website, whereas we could be paying around fourteen, fifteen dollars a month through some other services. The problem that came up with Godaddy, though, and this was something we didn't discover till later on, was that as far as the email they provide, there are problems with that. It has a size limit, which could cause problems in our building department because they receive very large PDF files of building plans, and so they want to make sure that none of their email bounces, as well as the fact that we use a lot of emails that forward to others, such as department head at City of Starkville that goes to all department heads, and it didn't support that. And so what I had asked Al to do was to see if there were any alternatives for around the same amount as Godaddy that would allow us to do that and still give us greater services than what we currently have. And so he had found one through another internet service, or web host called gate.com. They provide greater service than what we currently have for the same amount that we would be paying with Godaddy, and since we, since he hadn't actually switched over yet, it's not too late for us to go ahead and switch over. We don't, we're not in any sort of contractual arrangement as it is. So that was the only thing I had, wanted to make a motion on tonight, and the motion I wanted to make was I want to move that we rescind the previous motion authorizing Al Quinn to cancel the hosting services with bellsouth.net to godaddy.com, and instead I move that we authorize Al Quinn to replace our city web host from bellsouth.net to gate.com at the yearly cost of a hundred and forty-nine dollars and ninety-five cents.
Saving us around a thousand dollars.
A year, yes.
Okay. Any questions from Richard? I believe he has a motion. Do we have a second to his motion?
Second.
We have a motion with a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
May I abstain, Mr. Mayor?
Whatever, okay. One of the stances. Brings us down to consideration of the, the breach burn policy for the city of Starkville, which has been a pretty hot topic here for the last couple of meetings. And I believe y'all were having a gathering over there discussing cer, certain aspects of it.
Oh, just to make a few comments, as of course is the case with everything, nothing is very simple these days. Over the last several weeks, I have had numerous contacts from individuals, both pro and con, for burning bans in the city of Starkville. We had the problems associated with one particular burning area that David Jackson was referring to tonight. Certainly the discussion of larger landowners X distance from certain places makes sense. The comments of Bill Starr, for example, earlier, the comments of the gentleman here on Pine Crest, we, they're just a lot of things to consider in this, this whole burning thing, and I've had contacts run the gamut from absolute burn ban period in the city to X number of acres allow burning. We have, while we are trying to investigate this, initiated the burn ban for the city of Starkville. What I would like to recommend for your consideration tonight is that we lift the burn ban on pieces of property, two acres or above, that are not within established subdivisions, streets, roads, so forth, but that we continue for two weeks longer until the next board meeting, this discussion of, of burn over the entire city in established subdivisions, to get a little more input into this, and to try to come up with a policy that is, while it will never be perfect and a hundred percent please everybody, come up with something that is reasonable and realistic, that allows a developer or property owner to do some burning with proper permits and approval from the fire chief or his designated representative, and they are being, they are, the fire department being able to designate unsuitable weather for burns, all these types of things. We just need to do some fine tuning on the policy. So that's what I would propose for your consideration, a lifting of burn ban for two acres and more, not in established subdivisions or streets, along the streets and roads of the city. A continuation of the ban for two additional weeks until we can hopefully have a policy that we can finalize and fine tune at the next board meeting.
Second.
We have a motion of second. All of you heard the proposed motion, do we have any discussion?
Just Chief Grantham, does this sound like something you can work with and be able to communicate?
Yes, but we can handle it.
Thank you, Chief.
We have a motion with a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. Hope the folks that are here that wanted the, the request for larger places to be allowed burn, heard the motion and so forth. Our next item on, on the agenda is consideration of appointment of a recycling committee to study the, oh, the implications of our citywide recycling program for the city of Starkville. Open the floor up for discussions regarding that. I might add that Sumner, in talking to him on the phone, he suggested that we had a, a trash committee that was wondering if we could not say, let this become part of the trash committee. And I think you're a chairperson of that committee, is that not correct?
Yeah. Mr. Mills, what is the technical name for the committee, please, for the record?
Trash removal.
It's something to do with trash, recycling, and so forth.
I thought, what? It certainly seems a logical thing for the committee.
Okay. Would anybody be interested making a motion then that this would be something that the trash removable, removal committee would take consideration as well?
Mayor, I'd like to move that the trash committee now be also charged with the responsibility of looking into feasibility of a citywide recycling program.
You know, this might be also that it may come out of this, this committee a recommendation that some citizens may be involved with this thing to carry this thing even to another level. I, I just don't think this would be something that the committee would decide, but perhaps you could come forward with recommendations. We have a motion, do we have a second to the motion? Do we have a second to the motion that this committee comprise and take on to this responsibility?
Friendly amendment?
Second.
A reluctant second.
No.
Delayed second. Play of words. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nay. It passes? No, I just say word nay. I think that, is that get everything on that list up through there, not the things so marked up?
Excuse me, Mayor?
Yes.
If I may, I'm Stan Sherman, Starkville Recycling. I'd like to speak to y'all on this matter.
Well, you're not on the agenda if you give you about three minutes.
I had it put on the agenda through Mr. Mills.
Well, it doesn't have your name on here, but I just said we'll give you, we'll give you three minutes.
Thank you, sir. I have Starkville Recycling, I have been your recycler for three years. You've had no part of recycling in this town for three years. Even on your, right there voting, you hesitate to even make a vote for it. Let's get recycling going in this town. I mean, if y'all can't see the need for recycling, do y'all, anybody back here have seen a need for recycling in the city? Y'all, y'all, anybody against it? If you don't see a need for recycling in the city, you don't even need to be up here. Y'all hadn't put any money into it, I hadn't asked you for any money, but you hadn't even tried to promote it. And this committee needs to be made up of the residents. The residents are the people that's recycling here in this town. I don't even get any kind of paper, any kind of recycling from the city, not from City Hall, not from any businesses, I mean, not from any departments or anything. And I don't know why. If you're going to say let's recycle, how come you don't recycle? What I have right here for you tonight is pictures all throughout the town I've taken the last two days of cardboard and papers not being recycled. And I had to meet, I talked to your wife, and she told me what y'all were doing, and you had some of the least amount of garbage to be picked up as anybody, and I thank you for that. This right here is your plan put out by your citizen response. It shows everything about it in there. It compares it to the library, it compares recycling to your sports clubs. People obvious are wanting recycling. Y'all speak up, let's get this going. I guess my three minutes will probably end.
We appreciate that. But I think you did hear me suggest that out of this committee, there will be a recommendation that this be something that will be composed of citizens of the community. As you all saw earlier this evening, in citizens' comment, there was a very strong presentation by several in regard to recycling. So with y'all's committee, I would hope that y'all would look at this. Thank you. We'll move on. That brings us down to departmental business. The first one is Building Codes and Planning Department, that's part of my new charge. One of the issues we need to have is authorization to advertise for letters of interest for two vacancies on the Planning and Zoning Commissions in wards four and six. We have had one letter of interest for Ward six. We do need to continue to advertise for this and to see if we could get interest from Ward four, and we do have, as I said, an interest from Ward six. Mr. Lovell's back there has submitted his letter at this point. Would like to have an authorization for the city from the alderman to advertise for these
I would move we would authorize the advertising of, for indications of interest to fill vacancies from wards four and six on the planning zoning commission.
Second.
We have a motion of second, all those in favor say aye.
Mr. Mayor, would you like to put a cutoff time?
I was going to say this to be done in time or consideration at the next board meeting.
Next board meeting, August first, okay.
So cutoff a day or two before then, whatever's logic.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Passes. Authorization to adopt the stormwater control ordinance as recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
I'd move that we table this until the August first board meeting so the entire board could be here to, to discuss the issue and ultimately consider it for its approval.
Do we have a second to table this? We have a motion as, and a second to table this until the August the first board meeting? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Request approval for the site review for the First Baptist Church, and they've done a very nice job of landscaping what their proposal is with the Van Lanningham area, I believe. Do we have a motion that we need to, did you want to see, have any of you seen this?
Not seen it. I'll take a look at it.
Okay.
My name is Bill Burnett, and I'm the chair, chairperson of the Building Committee that's proposing this. It's just a picture of the outside. If you remember, this is the large warehouse that right now is vacant on the Van Lanningham property.
You're going to take down the wood racks in the back and do some?
Yes, sir.
Some issues there that?
This is currently what's being proposed, to tear down that middle building, the interiors design building that it used to be, turn all that into parking, as you can see, parking here, landscaping all around. We have met and exceeded all landscaping ordinances put by fourth by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Site review, the whole?
Site review was done last week, they approved it unanimously for, for your consideration. Trying to see if there's a?
No, well, I was out of town and not at the Planning and Zoning Commission, I understand the presentation was a first-class presentation, and the Planning and Zoning Commission questioned a few things here, but were very pleased with the proposed project.
Any questions? And do we have a motion that we approve this?
Mayor, I'd move, I'm sorry, Mr.
I would move that we give approval to the site plan for the First Baptist Church renovation project on the old Van Lanningham property.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. It brings us to our next item, thank you.
Great.
We have a request for approval of the amendment to the map, zoning map, to correct a scribbler's error, nineteen eighty-two. This property was previously zoned to a C two, and it's on the east side of the Hampton Inn. You know, that's what Bill Leinhardfeld's properties, I think, at one time, and there were two little lots to the east side in nineteen eighty-two that was zoned C two. The current maps have them as part of the University of Properties and no zoning at all on there, and the Planning Commission did recommend that we zone that back to the C two properties.
So move, Mr. Mayor?
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes. The second, the next request is approval of the preliminary and the final plat approval by RMR Investments. They are basically taking the old Kroger's property across the street from the high school, and they're converting that into commercial condominium spaces, I believe. That was also approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Our next item is a request, approval from a zoning change recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission. This is on Highway twelve coming into the city. Dr. Sant, is, has a representative, I believe, are you his son?
Yes.
Okay. Which, they're proposing to build a hotel, a, a full-service hotel at this location, and that approximately five or six stories, and it's really, it's a, a very good location for this.
But Mayor, it needs to be clarified that there was confusion at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting because of the presentation was all about the hotel. Some of the citizens were confused, and the reason why the zoning change was recommended had nothing to do with the hotel. And the board needs to be aware of that, based on your comments, because Planning and Zoning Commission made the recommendation- And the board needs to be aware of that, based on your comments, because Planning and Zoning Commission made the recommendation because of changing character of the area pursuant to state statute. So we need to make sure that it's clear in the minutes as to the reasons why, it has nothing to do with the hotel.
Changing the character.
Right, changing character in the needs of hotel rooms for the city was what, was the basis that Planning and Zoning Commission made the recommendation. And there was some confusing at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, and I want to make sure that the minutes were clear as to the reasons why it was done and for your, uh, approval of those reasons.
Do any of you have any questions in regard to that?
There's also been some confusion over the, over the exact location of the proposed hotel, to get back to that, and we'll circle back around to what the city attorney was talking about. Uh, could, uh, Mr. Sethi describe that for us?
Sure. He's the man behind the property front, so he can tell you exactly.
It's on the west side of highway, my name's David Corr, I was born and raised right where that highway sits, the northbound lane of Quail. That was when the city took it in years and years ago, it was farmland, and they just put R one. And when the highway come through, it took fifty-two acres of farm, well, that changed the whole, changed the whole farm into something else, it's not residential property, that farm property is one. And the reason we asked for a zoning change is, is, uh, see, I guess that's his name, uh, as he brought up. As he brought up. The complexion of the land has changed a hundred percent. And, and now, if you ride down it, down that highway, you can, you know, you can tell that that's commercial-type property, and that five acres across the road has already been zoned C two. And, and the process of, uh, bank fixing to be built, and, uh, another thing, and, and Dr. Satie's son, uh, Sonny Satie, he just brought a presentation to show what he expects to build there, and he's got tax figures and, uh, the revenue that'd be to the city, and it, and calling it the gateway to Starville and Mississippi State University, which, when you come off of eighty-two from either direction, east or west, when you look down the highway toward Mississippi State, what you'll see is this six-story, top-of-the-line hotel. Landscape like nothing, nothing in Starville's landscape close to what they do. Now let Sonny Satie explain to you.
Sure. As you can see from the packet I gave you, it's a very clear picture of the land where it's located. As my friend tells you, nobody's gonna live out there. It's a commerce, if it's not a commercial area yet, it's about to become probably the main commercial area in Starville. We want to build this hotel, but probably more than that, we want it to be rezoned. Um, there's a lot of information about the hotel, does anybody have any questions about the Hilton Lord Inn? I'd be glad to answer that.
There was good press coverage of this and a lot of excitement in the community to have a, a high-class hotel like this in our community.
Well, being here, listening to all the, the city business and, and enthusiasm to really improve Starville, I think it just fits in, it enhances what you guys are already doing, with the walking trail, the horse park. There's a lot about Starville, um, we wanna come do business here, but I ain't even there. And to give people a great place to stay, something when they first come into town, give them an excellent impression, that's all we wanna do.
Well, we certainly appreciate your considering Starville, and as I read this, I just became greatly excited about it, and this is gonna be great for our community, and we certainly welcome you to our fine city. And hopefully they will get this approved, so you can get on with the construction.
Is there any way to make palm trees like this, uh?
They will be palm trees.
Hilton's, um, Hilton's very stringent in their landscape, so it has to be done to their specif, not even ours, beyond ours, to their specifications. It will be a beautiful property.
So do we have a motion to?
So move, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Can I say one thing? He's got his tax figures and everything from the other Hilton cards they have, and it bring in roughly six hundred thousand dollars a year to the city of Starville.
And fifteen to a hundred jobs.
How soon can you get started?
Well, you just tell us when we can, and we'll be ready.
I see.
But you understand, Mr. Corr, as I told you in the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, this is not something the board, these things are all great, but that's not what they have to make their findings on and their recommendations on and their approval on, you understand that? Just so it's clear for the, for the minutes.
Changing the use of the land.
Yes, sir. What you said and what your family said is what convinced the Planning and Zoning Commission, it had nothing to do with the Hilton itself.
I appreciate what you said, there's somebody else here, too.
Do we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
What, what exactly is the motion?
What the motion is?
It is to change it from an R one to an R, uh, C two zone.
Okay, with the board finding as fact what, I'm gonna have to abstain, given relatives that own the property, but I'm trying to encourage your log here.
Uh, you have, you second that, I believe.
Given the change in the character of the area.
Okay.
With change of characterization of the area, okay.
And the need for hotel rooms in Starville, that was the basis of the findings, the Planning and Zoning Commission.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All those abstaining? Thank you, that passes, uh, thank you, I hope y'all get started next week. I can't wait. The next item is a regret, a request authorized to promote Vicki Lowery to the co-compliance clerk at a grade seven, step two A, for twenty thousand eight hundred and forty-one dollars a year. And with your permission, I would also like to add that we, uh, request authorization to advertise for the position of a city receptionist, since she would be doing, uh, that. The interview had two people to interview, uh, I believe that she was the, uh, most, was the best one for that, she's worked in that building department previously for what? Seven years, is that?
At least.
At least seven years, so she's familiar with, uh, a lot of aspects of, uh, uh, code enforcement and co-compliance. Do we have a motion that we approve hiring her?
I'd move that we authorize a promotion of Vicki Lowery to code compliance clerk at grade seven, step two A, at a salary of twenty thousand eight hundred and forty-one dollars and thirty-five cents. Um, the position would be effective July twenty-fourth, um, to, where, how did that date come from, why July twenty-fourth?
It was just, it was almost arbitrary, it was, it was opportunity for her to, she's gonna start doing both jobs, and the sooner we can get her doing both, she's gonna continue serving receptionists, so she's gonna take some of that work downstairs with her, so that she can begin the process of ramping up, so when she actually gets upstairs, we can get the receptionist in.
So the promotion would be effective July twenty-fourth, two thousand and six, and that she continuing her current duties until such time as we officially replace her.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion to second that we hire. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Could we at this time take the personnel thing to say require, request authorization to advertise for the position of city rece, uh, receptionist?
I would move we, uh, authorize for replacement of the city receptionist, filling the city receptionist's job.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion with a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. That passes, that brings us down to the office city clerk.
The only item I have is the approval of the claims docket, and with all the city's policies and procedures being adhered to, I recommend that the board approve the, uh, claims docket.
Mayor and Board, I move that we approve the June two thousand and six claim docket.
Do we have a second?
I have a second.
We have a motion with a second, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Thank you. That brings us down to Police Department. Chief, I think we got two items on here, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
I'll take the second first. Lieutenant Keith Davis just recently retired, and it has been our policy for the last few years, is acceptable by, uh, state law to allow the retiring employee to purchase their, uh, service weapon. And this is previously set at a sum of twenty-five dollars, so I would recommend that that be, uh, done in this case, for Lieutenant Davis to be allowed to purchase his weapon.
Mayor, I move with approval.
Second. Motion with a second, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay.
Second, uh, is a report on the citywide compliance with the no-smoking ordinance. Basically short and to the point, we, uh, are still in the information stages. People call and, uh, ask what they should do in matters where people are not complying, and we ask them if they want us to respond or not, and what should they do. What we're trying to instill on them is the fact that, uh, to make sure that they have the no-smoking signs posted, and for the most part, uh, once people understand that, um, they should ask the person not to smoke and remind them it's a no-smoking area, and then if they still don't comply, they call us and we will respond. We have not had an occasion to actually respond. At this stage, we're in a reactive mode, and we have had no calls or service where people did not comply. At some point in time, once everybody gets thoroughly familiar with it, we're gonna have to go into a proactive mode, where we're actually going, doing random checks to see if there is total compliance. So far, it has been, uh, not problematic, but we're still in the educational stage.
Any of you have any questions of him of this, uh, report?
Which, that, that fits with what we had heard from other communities, that it's self-enforcing, and, and it wasn't any surprise that?
Yes, sir, we've been very pleasantly surprised, and of course, our challenge will be, as the semester cranks up, and you people are in town and not aware of it.
I know one of the things that would help is that even though that every business owner was forwarded a, a no-smoking sticker, um, in town, even around the corner, that we have businesses that don't have that. Do you have any thoughts on how we might be able to?
That's part of, yes.
Especially as we're reintroducing new members to the community, specifically students, how we might, uh, be able to do that?
Correct. That's part of the proactive that I was talking about. Proactive is not only gonna be to go into stores and see if they, uh, have people, or a restaurant or bar, and see if they got people in violation, but it's also gonna be to check to see if people have it properly posted. Um, we anticipate that before we start that, we'll do a, uh, publicity campaign to remind everybody that that's what's required, and again, refer them to the website. I still think there's a little bit of confusion on people's part about exactly what they're supposed to do. Some people are under the impression that if they don't have a restaurant or a bar, that this doesn't apply to them, and in fact, it, of course, it applies to every commercial building or open to the public. And, uh, that's what really we're having the, uh, challenge in right now, is making sure everybody understands that. And, um, I feel like we've had good cooperation, uh, with the public, and, um, it's been the least controversial ordinance I've ever seen enacted, uh, and we've been real pleased with the response on it.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Doug?
Yes?
Something yours got struck down, we're gonna wait for the full board, but, uh, uh, I think item number three's still on there.
I just got this one item, Mayor, but before I get to that, with your permission, um, there were some comments made earlier tonight about the possible ill-health effects of our drinking water. And in the presence of the media and the, and the TV, I think it's important that I clarify some of those comments, because I don't want the public to, to get alarmed or have any misconception that there's some problem with our drinking water. Um, Ms. Coleman stated earlier that, um, um, according to her version, that, uh, the Water Department, myself, was, was not aware that we were exceeding some kind of maximum person, permissible level. The response to that is that, um, the only, uh, regulatory agency that we're accountable to, and that's the one who administers the federal, uh, health guidelines, is the Mississippi Department of Health. My understanding or perhaps misunderstanding of, of Mr. Davis's question at the last meeting was, was I aware that we had exceeded the maximum level on fluoride? Of course, I've only been here two years, and I can only, um, speak for what's happened under my watch, but, you know, just to be sure, I wanted to make sure I went back and looked at previous consumer confidence reports and make sure that we had not exceeded the Department of Health guidelines. Um, I'm happy to report that we have never exceeded the, the, uh, maximum guidelines of the Department of Health on fluoride. The maximum, uh, goal level of the Department of Health is exactly the same as the maximum permissible level, which is four parts per million of fluoride. The maximum level that, uh, that we put our consumer confidence reports, which you'll probably be receiving in the mail with your utility bills, uh, this next month, was zero point nine six part per million. So I just want to reassure the public that there's nothing wrong with our drinking water, it complies one hundred percent with, uh, Mississippi Department of Health requirements. Okay, thank you. Now, the only item I have tonight is, uh, with the amendments, is a request authorization for change order number one on our well number eight, uh, construction contract. And you'll see from the, uh, attach, attachments that, um, this particular change order is actually gonna take about a little over seven thousand dollars of cost out of the contract. So with that, I request your approval of change order number one on, on the contract for the construction of well number eight.
Do we have a motion?
Move approval of change order number one in the contract of construction of well number eight. And of course, that change order reduces the contract amount, um, by seventy-one hundred.
Seventy-one hundred and fifty dollars.
Second. Motion to the second, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
We'll be right with you. Oh, we've got sanitation department, Lynn, are you gonna represent her tonight?
I am. I want to be so kind as to indulge me, uh, Ms. Boyd.
Our department head is not here tonight?
She is a well, family emergency. So y'all be kind, and I'll do my best. She's requesting authorization to advertise for a vacant labor position, we have a resignation that, um, first of June, I believe it was, um, Mr. Chandler resigned on June the fifteenth, I'm sorry, and we need to advertise for that vacancy. It will be, uh, labor position grade three, step four.
I move that we authorize to advertise for vacant labor position at grade three, step four.
You have a second?
Second.
We have a motion with a second, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Second, Ms. Boyd.
Thank you. It's, uh, requesting authorization to advertise for the bids for the garbage bag purchase, our annual purchase. Um, the timing on this is about the same every year, in this case, she's going to advertise, or her request is to advertise for both the two-point-oh mil bags and the one-point-five as separate bids, to see what the differential in the, in the cost would be. I think, uh, that she's had some people over the last year discuss the difference between the one-point-five mil bags and the two-mil bags, so she wanted to see what that cost difference would be, and if it would be worth, uh, continuing at the one-point-five mil level, so.
These bags have, um, are impacted by, by the price of petroleum.
Absolutely, yes.
Makes a lot of sense for us to go ahead and lock in a bid, so.
And that's the thought, is that they're probably going to go up here shortly, I think she's had conversations with the distributors of the bags and that they're going to kind of go up shortly based on the petroleum costs, so.
I'd move that we advertise, um, the bid for our polyethylene garbage bags, um, in both two different options, one is a two-mil bag with an order date of September seventh and a delivery of September twenty-eighth, two thousand and six. And the other is a one-point-five mil bag with the same order and delivery date. And this, the quantity of the bid would be twenty-four thousand bags.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion with a second, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Uh, this brings us down to moving to a closed session in order to discuss potential litigation. Do I hear a motion moving to a closed session?
I would move we enter executive session on purpose of determining whether or not we will do a closed session. we will do a closed session on potential litigation.
We have a motion moving to executive session to determine if we need a closed session.
No, no, let's get the record straight. We're going to close session...
That's what I just suggested. Mr. McLaurin was trying to change that.
Okay, all right.
But I think you're right.
I am right. We're going to go into closed session to make a determination, ask whether we should go into executive session.
That's correct.
Yes, sir.
Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.